Okay, let's call it to order. City Clerk?
Councilmember Agency Director Mann?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Silvio?
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Tonight the implications will be by Pastor John Metters at Christian Life Assembly.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you that we can again come before you and present our requests, and that we're able to do it in this form. And, Lord, I pray that your peace would rest upon this city and that you'd bring this together as one in you. Lord, guide our city council tonight and in the days to come, give them wisdom, give them direction. We know that your word says that those who are in leadership are appointed by you, and so we pray for your wisdom. Bless this evening, we pray, in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Mr. Silvio, you want to lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, tonight we only have one presentation, but it's a big presentation. And if Mr. Bozighian would come down and help me?
Thank you, Mayor Paris. One of the pleasures in this city for the council and myself is working with such a wonderful staff. And over the last couple of years, the economy's been really difficult, and the staff hasn't retrenched. They've gone out and been innovative. A lot of that's because of the leadership of our council that allows us to go out, take chances, and fail occasionally. This year, in our employee breakfast, we were honored to have Mayor Paris represent the council there, and we gave some awards. But what we did is, we did it a little bit different this year. We would've never got through the last two years and been doing some of the things that this city is doing had we not worked as a team. It's not individual, it's team. So what our HR Director, Beverly Glow, did is design a broad-based recognition program, where we had the community and employees are able to put in their comments about the staff. And we received comments from over 500 individuals, both the public and our city staff. We gave out nine awards. I'm going to quickly go through them and then highlight the last and the largest award. We gave out a major achievement award for the general plan team. That was something that will set our city apart over the next 10 years. We gave out two cost savers awards for our public works, or, excuse me, the parks crew, which had over 600 days without an injury or a lost day at work. That's incredible. We also gave it, and this is sort of a lifetime achievement award, to our finance department. I don't know where we would be in this city without the stewardship of Barbara Boswell and her crew. We also gave an unsung heroes award, and it's no surprise, it went to the IT division, because no one likes IT when they show up, because their computers are broken. But they always show up at any time, day or night, on weekends as well, too. The largest cheer was for our graffiti crew, which I was heartened to see. This group of folks gets rid of more graffiti per capita than probably any group in Southern California. And it's very important, as the mayor has been on record as saying several times. We gave our innovation award to our economic development team for their economic stimulus package, which was a national award-winning program. Two awards, or, an award that I think is very important, it's called sustained excellence, went to two groups, our city clerks department and our parks recreation and arts department. The reason we gave that is, day in and day out, those groups show excellence, and they personify excellence. But the major group that we gave the award to for exceptional service in 2009 is a group that I felt did more for the city than any other group. And it was a hard choice, because a lot did. That went to our housing and neighborhood revitalization department, and I'd like to And there's a lot of them, this'll take a moment.
How are you?
You guys can all stand back there?
Well, no wonder you guys are doing such a great job. You're half the city.
It's a large group, but they do an incredible job. From the foreclosed home program, which has literally saved neighborhoods, to our neighborhood impact homes, to neighborhood building, working with the face-based community to help keep kids out of gangs, code enforcement. This city looks better because of the efforts of code enforcement over the last two years. Well-deserved award in 2009. I'd like to ask Elizabeth to say a couple words, which she didn't know about, or she wouldn't have agreed. And then I'd ask the mayor to present the award after that.
Yeah, I do, I too. It's a real team effort, and we really work together every day to make a change in this community. And we're all really, really dedicated to it. It's what we want to do, we're excited about it, and because of that, we are able to get up every day and do what we do and make changes in the community. Thank you.
You know, what these folks really do is, they make our neighborhoods livable. You know, it's a whole different city once we turn you guys loose, you know? And we see it getting better and better and better. And as I was driving to the city today, I was just watching all the people walking, you know? And not too long ago, we didn't see too much of that. And not only were they walking, they were walking with little dogs. You know, we never saw that, and for very good reasons. You've made this city a great place to live, and I can't wait to see what you do next. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this to you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, sure. Thank you. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, anything to be removed from the agency consent calendar?
No, sir.
I thought we had RCC four and six.
Yeah, Mayor Paris, RCC four and RCC six. I need to excuse myself. That's properties located on Beach, and I have property in the vicinity on Beach Avenue as well.
So I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised?
I'll second that. We're not blinking.
I was going to say, we're going to have to take that IT award back. Okay, it's unanimous. And Mr. Mann, if you want to leave?
I'll move that we adopt RCC four and six.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous with Mr. Mann out of the room. We'll now hear a staff report for RNB one from the Economic Development Director, Vern
Mayor and council, we come before you tonight to ask for approval and agreement that would acquire some operating covenants from HW Hunter, which is a long-term Lancaster business. They've actually been in business for 66 years. Depending on conditions, these covenants will run from 10 to 20 years, and because they've been doing this for 66 years, we don't think that's much of a stretch. This is a continuing effort where we're attempting to protect the sales tax that we receive from Lancaster Auto Mall. Today's paper indicated that in 2007, 24 automobile dealerships closed up in the state of California, and yet in '08 and '09, 260 automobile dealerships closed up in the state of California. That's a fate we don't want to experience in Lancaster if we can prevent it. The operating covenant is in exchange for a loan guarantee. I think it's important to make this distinction. I didn't do a particularly good job on the staff report based on the articles in the paper, which made it seem that they were going to receive this money. That is not the case. This deal is basically a requirement of a lender who currently has flooring for their automobiles. This is not new financing they're going to get, but it's existing flooring that they have, a $5 million amount, and they want a higher level of comfort. So in essence, the city of Lancaster is acting much in the same way that the federal government acts in the SBA loan guarantee program. Under SBA, there's what they call the 7A loan program, and in that case, the federal government stands up and guarantees those loans. In most instances, there's no involvement at all with the federal government, but in the event of a default, then they're called in to participate. And that's precisely the same phenomenon that we have here. The guarantee will be for a $500,000 amount. As I mentioned, sales tax, which is confidential, but I'm here to tell you that during good times, this dealership generates that much money in a single year. We have the standard clauses in there, including an innovative clause that we've gotten from other dealers, that should we have an emergency, they would make their trucks available to the community for emergency purposes. This dealership has 77 jobs. They've been doing business for a long time. We have a lot of respect for the principals who are in the audience tonight, and with me, they'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Question, Mr. Lawson, just so you could be clear for the audience and everything. This is redevelopment money?
That's correct.
That's right? And so those are restricted funds, they're not general fund funds that we use for cops and stuff? This is money that we get as a tax increment in order to use for specific things like this, to...
That's correct. And our exposure is a limited period of time, and we, quite candidly, don't expect for this money to go out at all. We expect that we will provide this cushion, they'll continue to remain the excellent businesses that they are, and then it will be paid back.
Right. So, and on these particular types of properties in the redevelopment district, if they were, you know, vacant, then that tax increment that we would actually get and the sales tax would be decreased?
Yeah, that's an excellent point, and obviously, that's something we're trying very hard to prevent in the Lancaster Auto Mall. And so far, so good. But it's a tough business. You don't have to, you know, read any business section to know the trouble that the automobile dealers continue to have, and so we need to stand and partner. I should mention the fact that, you know, we've had past partnerships with these people, and they've done exactly what they said they were going to do initially when they built the new facility in that auto mall. It was a sales tax sharing agreement, and that was completely extinguished. So we've had a long track record of success with these people, and we'd recommend that it be continued.
No more questions for Mr. Lawson?
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have one speaker card, David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I stand before you in support of RNB one. If you don't understand that you have to protect the economic tax base of our city, then I don't know what you do understand. But I'm a little confused, there's a lot of accusations flying around. I took this off one of the blogs. It's AV Town Cryer, he says, "I think Pope Rex did this on purpose, the religious controversy. While we're all focusing on the religious BS, Rex and his cronies are looting City Hall." I remember the great press conference Mr. Pelka held on the street when he dropped out of the mayor race and said that he's going to be shining the light on corruption and watch the cockroaches scatter. And in here, Mr. Rodeo says, "Shine the light on public business so there's no backroom deals." Is this a backroom deal? I'm not sure. But if they have any proof that that stuff goes on, I wish they'd bring it forward. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
No more speakers cards.
Okay.
It was late.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to say that, you know, on something like this, we're not only having the sales tax revenue, the sale, the property increment that we get in the redevelopment agency, 77 jobs, but this is what the redevelopment agency is here for. And that's why we set it up years ago. And so I think it's a, I think it's a good and wise decision.
Mayor Paris, I also want to make sure that people understand that this is one of the Chrysler dealerships that was actually recognized. I know there was some historical conversations about closing dealerships, and this dealership has a history of 66 years, and is what I consider a premier dealership, and it would be remiss of us not to take this action tonight.
So, City Attorney, I bought the fastest truck ever produced in America at Hunter Dodge, and I love it. Does that mean I have to recuse myself?
No, sir.
Good.
Well, in that case, I'll move that we approve the acquisition agreement with HW Hunter.
I'll second that.
authorize the executive director to execute all documents.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
It's unanimous.
Okay, moving on.
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar.
You in a hurry today? Something on television, what?
It's the Winter Olympics. I'll second that.
You got a second? Let's vote. Okay, we'll have the joint public hearing. We'll now open the joint public hearing and hear the staff report on JPH one from Elizabeth Brubaker. Isn't it wonderful to be able to give a speech you're prepared for?
She did fine.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council members. In early 2006, the city of Lancaster initiated a comprehensive planning process for downtown Lancaster in an effort to revitalize downtown and create a corridor that is a place of historic, cultural, social, economic, and civic vitality for the Lancaster community. A developer is proposing to construct a vibrant landmark to help anchor the downtown's pedestrian promenade next to the Lancaster Performing Arts Center. It will be a multi-story entertainment venue and has the potential to act as a major catalyst of new development to bring more to the downtown. The proposed development includes the creation of three new tenant spaces featuring a state-of-the-art multi-screen movie theater showing artistic movies never before shown in the city, a modern bookstore, and cafe. The developer has entered into a lease agreement with an independent theater operator who owns the largest chain of art house movie theaters in Southern California, with eight movie venues showing A-list indie films, foreign films, and first-run movies. Lancaster will make number nine. They have been qualifying feature films, documentaries, and shorts for Academy consideration in their theaters for decades. The developer anticipates the theater will exhibit award-winning independent and foreign films and possibly first-run movies. The proposed development, while conforming to the redevelopment plan, adds an exciting aspect to the existing and proposed uses in the area, including the LPAC, restaurants, and the Lancaster Promenade, currently under construction and almost completed. To continue the progression of the development of downtown Lancaster, please adopt Resolution Number 0710 and Number 1010 approving the disposition and development agreement and the Promenade II funding agreement between the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency and Lancaster Promenade II LLC for the property located on the southeast, southwest corner of Fig Avenue and Lancaster Boulevard. Scott, the developer, is here to speak to you about the project and to answer any questions you might have. And here is your powerpoint. You're welcome.
Scott, you know you've arrived when you're just Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott Erlich.
I don't know how to do this.
Oh, you want me to try?
I never. I know not to put bullet points in, though. Thanks, Kevin. My name is Scott Erlich from Insight Development. Good evening. This afternoon, I was at the groundbreaking of the museum. And for those of you who know me, I think you think that I'm kind of hyper and excited. Time's up by 10 right now, yes. Ron, you're shaking. This is, I am so excited. What we are doing, or what you are doing with my help, is returning Lancaster to its former glory. I mean, it is absolutely going to be the place that people think of first when deciding to eat or entertain, as opposed to what I call the asphalt jungle, or you may call the mall. If you don't see it, give it a couple months, and you will see we will become the number one option, and it's just really exciting. What I'm here to talk about tonight is not everything that Liz said, but I'm going to add to it, that we are going to reinvent the movie-going experience for adults. And by the way, when I was thinking about that, I actually said reinvent the adult movie-going experience, and that kind of is, I started going, wait a minute, that's not. So, the movie-going experience for adults. Clear on that one? Thank you. Right now, Cinemark, who's pretty much our only movie theater up here, claims that customer satisfaction, I'm reading this, is their number one concern. Customer satisfaction is their number one concern. Uncomfortable seats, people kicking from behind, rowdy people in the audience, expensive food, and not that great right now, and rushing to go get a seat. I mean, the anxiety of saying, "I got to get there early and sit in the movie theater and watch commercials for 30 minutes in order to get a seat." What we are going to do with this new development is reinvent that whole experience. Kevin, click it on there. What we're proposing is small venues, anywhere between 32 and 49 seats. The seats will be large, comfortable, reclining seats, state-of-the-art sound and digital projectors, fine food and a glass of wine, if you so choose, assigned seating, and just changing the whole entire experience. And that's kind of what we're proposing here, as opposed to just going to the movies and leaving, and getting in and out. This is just one more part to the whole downtown. In addition, we are going to, oh, let me go with the floor plans, thank you. The floor plans, additionally, what we are proposing is to have a two-story upfront, if you see, a two-story bookstore, and then the theaters will be behind. In the retail community, it's a fact that bookstores and theaters are symbiotic. If you look at a lot of retail locations, the reason is they work together, is you, the people who go to movies like to buy books and vice versa. So we took it a step further, and we said, "Let's combine it." And so what we have is a two-story, large bookstore, it's going to be 6,000 square feet, and a cafe lounge. The cafe lounge will both serve the bookstore as well as the theater. High-end, high-end food, and the theaters will be located in the back, and then the second story up above will also be books and magazines. And we're contemplating a third floor on top of it, which I think would be an ideal use for the city to promote the downtown. I mean, during the races or during everything, I know we spoke about that, and I think the third story of an all-glass building up top would be tremendous. It would be about 3,000 square feet. What we've done here, and I want to be clear, is we have not made any designs. There are just some options that we kind of looked at to show you what we're thinking of. Part of our goal and why it's real important to us that we haven't made especially exterior designs is, we want to make sure it incorporates the LPAC. And there's some talk about maybe upgrading the look of the LPAC, and we'd be working very closely with that architect or designer to make sure that those two are, again, symbiotic. What the building would look like is high-end, I mean, you could see the pictures up there, two stories, something with a lot of glass up front so people can see in. Just, again, I think you can get the upscale atmosphere that we're shooting for. So that is what I'm here to present. I would like to add, and the mayor, I think you said it this afternoon, besides everything we're doing in the downtown, it didn't hit me until the other day, walking, about how many jobs that locals, I mean, 92% of the people who are working out right now doing the construction, our jobs are locals. 100% of the people who are running all these businesses, who are actually running them, are mom and pops from the, from the community. The amount of permanent jobs that we are working on between Beck's, the restaurant, and Yogurt, and the bookstore and theaters, is more jobs than Sam's Club and a Best Buy combined, and not minimum wage jobs, none of them. So I think, again, all the insight that everybody's had has been incredible to bring Lancaster back. I think your staff is absolutely unbelievable. I think the award, I knew most of those people for the housing department, and unfortunately, a lot of the code enforcement people also, but it's a love-hate relationship. But I commend them, I think the award was well-deserved, and again, thank you for all your help. Any other questions?
When will it be completed?
It has to be completed one year from April 1st. So it has to be completed one year from April 1st.
So April 1st to...
And that's not a fool's joke, yes. April 1st, it will be March 30th, before, March 30th, 2011.
That's incredible.
Yeah, it's going to be incredible.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I might add, we've been working on this for a couple months now and trying to put together all the details of this, and it's still evolving a little bit with the lenders. There are issues that we're working through, I think we'll find solutions for those. But I'd just like to observe that as energetic as Scott is, he has staff members that make him seem downright lethargic. They just...
Does DEA know about this?
So I, it's been a pleasure working with him, and we'll be hopefully finalizing this in the next few days. Actually, I think we should resolve most of the remaining issues tomorrow on a conference call. So hopefully, all of it comes together, and this is a pretty exciting project, if we can get it done in a year.
Vice Mayor, you recommended a book, which I did read. And one of the quotes from Steve Jobs, I was just looking at it, it said, and it goes to your, the ADD is the more hyperness of the company that I run, but it says, "Follow your passion and do what you love." This is what Steve Jobs is all about, is follow your passion and do what you love, and hopefully, the money will follow. And that's really what this is all about, and I think you're confusing hyperness with passion, so, or combo of both. Yes, thank you. You know, the one last point is, the whole development and what's phenomenal about the city is, in order to get this built, we're taking money and releveraging the same exact money twice. And that's the beauty of it, and it's not costing an additional penny. It's using some federal tax credits, which I think the state of California well-deserves to get back. And that's what's so great about it, so, thank you.
Scott, I think you're doing an incredible job. I can't say enough good things about you. What you're doing for this city is truly a gift. Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards.
Let's close the joint public hearing. Any discussion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 07-10 for the agency. Can we do both at once?
Can we take those currently? Got to do those separate.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous?
And for the city, I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 10-10.
I'll second that.
And it's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, the public hearing, and here's staff report on PH one from Robert Neal, the Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to...
I'm here to request consideration of adoption of Resolution Number 10-11, ordering the vacation of Date Avenue between Jackman and Kettering Streets. The vacation facilitates the construction of American Heroes Park. In addition, I'm asking that, should you adopt the resolution, that you would also add a condition that a utility easement be preserved in the vacated right-of-way. This blanket utility easement would allow water service into and through the American Heroes Park. The hearing tonight is to receive public testimony. I would like to remind you that this vacation is one component in the disposition and development agreement between the Redevelopment Agency and the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles. The agreement is part of the implementation of the North Downtown Transit Village Vision Plan, which includes the construction of American Heroes Park. This agreement also allows Sacred Heart Church and School to expand its property. Twenty-two feet of the thirty-foot right-of-way becomes part of the park, and eight foot of the thirty-foot right-of-way expands Sacred Heart. You approve the development agreement in December. Other actions include the Planning Commission determination as in conformance of the general plan, and the City Council's adoption of Resolution Number 10-2, declaring its intent to vacate the public right-of-way in setting tonight's public hearing. With that, thank you, and I'm standing here to answer questions.
Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Neal?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any speaker cards?
No speakers' cards, Mr. Mayor.
I do put in a speaker card. I put in a speaker card.
Not on this one.
Not on this one.
I'm sorry. I think we should do that.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 10-11.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Okay, new business, staff report from the Finance Director, Barbara Boswell, or the city manager.
And there's no speakers' cards in that one either.
You got stuck with it, didn't you? Okay.
She's more capable.
I think it's because I'm not bringing you good news.
Somebody's gonna YouTube that now, you know.
More capable at this particular presentation?
Okay.
And I think it's because I'm not bringing you good news. I'm looking forward to the day that when I come to the podium, it's bringing you good news that the economy has improved, that our revenues are growing, and that we are in a state of prosperity. Unfortunately, that is just not the case for us. We had developed our budget, you might recall, we adopted it in June, but we actually started developing our assumptions and our revenue forecasts in February of March of last year. At that time, we really were cautiously optimistic that the economy would get maybe a little slower, and that revenues might flatten off, flatten, be flat compared to prior year. That, as we all know from the news, that isn't the case. Our assessed valuations have decreased significantly. Assessed valuation derives a number of different revenue sources the city receives for its general fund, which is used then to pay for our police services, our, a great amount of our street services to maintain our parks. Our sales tax has also continued to decline, although we're seeing some, some good signs. For the past seven quarters, we had seen double-digit decline comparing the same quarter year to year in auto sales. This past quarter, which was the most recent quarter we have information for, which was the third quarter, it was off by only three percent. So, that, I think, is a good sign to go from seven quarters of double digits to a single digit, and it's, three percent is small. We're hearing reports that the fourth quarter was not too bad for our auto dealers. So, we're starting to see small signs of improvement, but they're just not there. As a result, we do come to you with a mid-year budget review, that is, a report that we're having to decrease our revenues. Now, we're not asking for a decrease in expenditures, and you might think, well, why is that? Well, we had worked very hard in putting this year's budget together to provide a budget that was reflected the service levels we thought we could provide with the revenues that we were projecting to have. We also had, you might recall, very healthy reserves. What we're doing, what we're able to do because of those reserves is cover the shortfall in revenues, continue to work with the service levels that we have budgeted, and then spend the next several months planning for, and working on developing a budget for next year that meets our lower projections. It will be a difficult budget process upcoming. You know, we will have to make some tough choices, but I know, working together, we've been a great team, that we're up for the challenge and will meet the challenge. This mid-year budget proposal does continue to maintain our ten percent operating reserve and our twenty-five percent financial stability reserve, so we're not touching those reserves at all. The money's coming from the savings that we had at the end of last year. So, we ended last year with a little better revenue position and savings and expenditures, and so, that money has just been sitting there for us, so we're gonna use that to fill this hole and get us through the year. We also need to appropriate money, the bond funds, we did a bond issue for housing, and we didn't appropriate those funds, and those are funds that the Housing Department, you saw, uses to do a lot of the good work that they're doing in the community, so part of that, this action is taking care of that. With that, that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I would like to add one more thing, and that is that, you know, this, Mayor, you and your council have been very supportive and proactive in managing, being fiscally conservative, managing the city's finances, and that's really what has put us in this position. It's the steps and policies that you put in place, not last year, but the year before that, and not spending every dime that we had. We had money in the bank that very could have easily been spent. Because we didn't, we can do what we're doing tonight. And with that, I appreciate that.
Wait a minute, you had money in the bank and you didn't tell us?
No, we've always said we have retained our reserves.
We're not, we're not really cutting any services, are we?
No.
No. So, we're not cutting services, and we're balancing our budget, and we're making adjustments, and we're not dipping into our reserves, and there's a lot of cities that are teetering on bankruptcy, and, and other cities that are worried about what they're gonna do, and so this isn't bad news, this is great news.
Well, that's good. We are, the staff is working very hard at looking at their budgets and looking for areas to cut, looking for ways to be more efficient, looking, you know, there was a good example today, Joe Cabral came up with an idea where we could use the Outlook instead of sending out a separate postcard that saved twelve thousand dollars. So, we're always looking for ways to, to work smarter, so, and we'll continue to do that.
Mr. Cottle got a smaller laptop.
Yeah.
He must have been the first item on the new budget, huh? The adjustment.
That's really funny.
I won't comment.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Well, with that, I'll, for the agency, I'll recommend that we adopt the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency-proposed 2009-10 mid-year budget and expenditure adjustments.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
And for the city, I will move that we adopt Lancaster City Council-proposed fiscal 2009-10 mid-year budget revenue and expenditure adjustment, and adopt Resolution Number 10-12.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, Robert Neal, new business item one.
Mayor, City Council, I think I have some good news. Steve Dasler, our Utilities Division Manager, his group, by the way, oversees the recycled water system, has been working with the Army Corps of Engineers for several years in developing and improving the water system. His efforts will pay off in a big way. With your permission, I will have him explain how the city will be beneficiary to a major recycled water project. Steve, would you come up and, and help us out, because this is exciting news.
Mayor and council members, again, my name is Steve Dasler, I'm the Utilities Services Manager. For about the past seven years, we've been working with the Corps of Engineers. Back in 2004, we entered into, the city entered into an agreement with the Department of the Army to, in what's called a, sorry, a project cooperation agreement, which was a take money that was authorized by Congress for a particular project, our projects here in the city of Lancaster, which initially involved potable water. So, there were five projects that were identified. And the, so the city's worked with the Corps, money was appropriated, we actually built a thirty-six-inch water line, potable water line, that was part of the county's master plan in Avenue H that connected part of the master loop that serves the city. That was a couple of years ago. Not too long ago, the federal government authorized an additional ten million dollars, and that was for recycled water. So, under the same act, the same congressional act, we now have twenty-four point five million dollars that's been authorized for the city to use, not appropriated, but authorized. We had received about six million dollars, and about this time last year, we were notified by the Corps of Engineers that we had some money for, seven million dollars actually, of the IRA money, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act money, to use towards a recycled water line. And so, that's good news for us, but then about six months later, they said, wait a minute, it's not for the recycled water lines, it's for one of the potable water line projects. And through the use of our congressional representatives, that got changed, and we were able to use it for the recycled water line, so that was a good thing. We just found out about that the end of January, but we had already been under design with the, a project that actually will take water from Lancaster Boulevard and Division Street over to City Park, so down Division Street to Avenue K, and then west in Avenue K to 10th Street West. And a part of that line also was to go down from Avenue K, in Sierra Highway, Avenue K down to Avenue, and just to ultimately connect the two treatment plants, water treatment plants. So, it's exciting that this money is available. When we get water, recycled water to City Park, that, City Park right now uses about a hundred and fifty million gallons of water a year, which is the equivalent usage of about four hundred and fifty homes or so. So, that will take that potable water and make it available for additional homes, and we'll be using recycled water at City Park. Part of the project cooperation agreement is that the federal government pays seventy-five percent of, up to seventy-five percent of construction cost, the city is responsible for twenty-five percent as a minimum of the construction cost of a project. So, the project we have right now, the plans are prepared now to advertise this coming Thursday, they'll open bids next month, and be ready to award the project. The savings that we'll receive at City Park once it's on recycled water, right now, it'd only be about, it'll be about nine thousand dollars a year in savings, just for the water costs, there's some meter costs as well, that would be savings. But with the increase in water cost that is being looked at right now with the, either chloramines or the GAC filtering, that number could go way up. The potable water costs will go up substantially, and the difference would be quite a bit. So, if those, if the cost of potable water doubled, we'd be looking at about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year in savings for water. So, it's quite a bit, depending on what those actually do. So, taking, getting potable water to City Park is a, is a good thing. Let's see. In order to do that, there's, there's three actions before you tonight to approve the amendment to the PCA, which allows that, the PCA to be amended to use recycled water, as opposed to just potable water. Also, to transfer the different funds from one of our capital improvement projects to this one, to be able to convert City Park to recycled water, and then to be able to approve the use of some funds from a, an account that the Regional Board holds that was a fine, or a portion of a fine that the sanitation districts have been paying into the, because of us, seasoned assist org that, that they were hit with a couple of years ago. So, there's money in that account, and that account is specific for building our project, or also a project in, in Palmdale. So, with that, if you have any other, any questions, I'll try to answer them.
You sure we have to give Palmdale any of it?
The way it's actually written is it's a first-come, first-served.
I just thought I'd ask.
And we're gonna be first.
By far.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I just think that we need to make sure that everybody recognizes, this is one example that we just heard Barbara Bosworth go through and talk about the mid-year budget. It's, it's things like this that staff does that are aggressive, that ultimately saves this money and gets this money from, in this case, from the federal government, the Army. So, I think it's a great thing.
You know, my daughter tells me, I says, just keep my mouth shut half the time, and I think she's probably right, but this really isn't a cost-saving measure. I mean, if you save a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year, but we're invested seven million to do it, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, but what it is, it's a water-saving measure.
It does that, and it's also building part of the master plan that will go out to other areas and be able to serve other, other properties at a future date.
And while it's taxpayer mind, you're right about the seven million, it's the federal dollars, or our local dollars, using other people's money is always good.
And in this case, it's for the major portion plus the mass.
We could all have a discussion about this till midnight, couldn't we, whether? Okay. Thank you very much. We have one speaker card, is that all right? Nicole Parsons.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hey, how you doing? Why are you, hello, everyone. My question was, is how are you guys signing an agreement, and if there's some type of bet that's going out next week, then what's that for? If there's a bid going out next week, then how come you guys are signing an agreement now? And then, that was a plan that was started, what, seven years ago? Our downtown recycled water plan was started, what was it, four years ago? So, those are two different projects. And is Edwards in Kern County? Cause if it is, and then, you know what, and then something that's unsustainable is water, water briefs life. And then, but the only thing he says is that, it's like the money and the office, he didn't say anything about life, and there's nothing funny about degradating or, you know, infecting, say for instance, the, the, the life of it, and, and that's what it would do. And then also, like, the astronauts, you guys know, the president, they're all talking about global warming and stuff. So, maybe the astronauts should stay out of, out of space right now, cause the forces are just too strong. So, say for instance, it, when you get infection, it pushes you out. And then, there's something that's called a transitional losses. And that's, and, you know, and that, and that would be like, you, that's the secondary to depreciate, double, double disinfecting the water. There's graves and there's, you know, like, sometimes, like, the most important part of global warming is the gases, but since we have a whole bunch of type of environments, there's some type, there's some type of plant species that thrives off the acids, and, and, and the bigger plan is right now, we all might wanna form walking, a forces of four to overpower, but water, there's water that way, or a better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay. Any discussion?
I'll move that we adopt Amendment Number One to the project cooperation agreement PCA with the United States Department of Army Corps of Engineers.
PCA with the United States Department of Army Corps of Engineers, and authorize the Director of Public Works to sign all associated documents.
Second, Matt? Let's vote. Well, that was quick. No council agenda. City manager, any announcements?
I have two announcements. I want to say something first before that, though. Despite the mayor's daughter's advice, we talk daily, and I get a lot of those. And what struck me today was something when I first became city manager, I was very happy with the job, and I was talking to the mayor about that, and I said, if only the economy was better. And he said, no, that's not what you should wish, because creativity comes from adversity. And that's stuck with me and with the staff, and that we don't look at, geez, we'll wait for the economy to be better, we're trying to be inventive. And, and I'm just struck with how, as a city, we're able to do some of the things we're doing here, because we're either looking for grants or looking for better ways to do it, partnering with people like Scott Erlich, and, you know, just makes me proud to be part of the city. With that, I have two other announcements. The first is that we were invited by Supervisor Antonovich. We're gonna send a small delegation to China with Supervisor Antonovich in, in mid-March, and his wife Christine, we're invited to tour a major auto plant and alternative energy company that's looking to set up shop in the United States. And we're there at the behest of the supervisor to pitch Los Angeles County and Lancaster. So we'll be taking a small delegation, probably three staff members, and the mayor, and we'll be going in mid-March. We'll be funding it out of existing travel budget. We will not be asking for any additional funds. We'll be funding it out of the council and city manager's travel budget. Councilwoman Marcus asked that we play later and...
I want to be clear on that. The, the mayor and the mayor's staff will be funded by the mayor personally. It's not gonna cost the city anything.
That is correct. We did, the mayor did do an interview on Fox Business News, I believe it was Monday. Councilmember Marcus asked that we play it later, and I think it explains a little bit more about what we're trying to do. The second announcement is, while it's been extraordinarily difficult to work, to get a demonstration of the Sky Sentinel project, I, across our fingers, think we're almost there. We have a couple other issues to work through. If we can do those, we would expect a one-week demonstration sometime towards the end of March. At that point, based on the success of that demonstration, I would then be coming back, or staff would be coming back to council as part of the budget discussions, depending on that demonstration again, to fund that project as part of our priorities for fiscal year 10, 11. The demonstration, it's intend right now to do it at little or no cost to the city. If there was a cost, it'd be a minor cost. And I have every anticipation it's going to work, it's gonna be a success, but we need to wait to see before we take the next step with the project. With that, if you happen to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Mark. City clerk, any announcements?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out as clearly and concisely as possible, so that if the city council or staff needs to get in touch with you, they will be able to read your card. And as much as we appreciate that you request to speak before your three minutes begin, please understand your time does begin when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during your time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. State law prohibits the city council and the redevelopment agency from taking action on items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Mr. Bozignian, can we go ahead and show that clip now? Would it be all right to show it now while we're lining up our speakers?
If someone more technically proficient than I can turn it on, sure.
Can we call IT?
We have Kelvin, he's our secret weapon here. I want to take one speaker while we're setting it up, if that's okay?
Do we have another? Why don't we start with Lyle Talbot? You ready, Lyle?
Mayor and council, members of the audience, staff.
Mr. Talbot, if you could pull the microphone down just a little bit, it's right there.
I can't stand up taller.
That's, that's good.
Mayor and council, staff, audience members, I'll let you know about an item I brought up almost two years ago, about Blue Fire Ethanol Refinery, that wanted to build the refinery out by the dump, Lancaster landfill. They gave up. They're gonna build their first facility in Mississippi. They said there was too much California regulation, too little green waste, we only have six months' growing season, and too many environmental wackos in the neighborhood. So I want to bring to your attention the next item. It's something to decap our desert citizens against pollution. And we've been discussing Palmdale's new power plant that they want to build at Plant 42. It will become the largest source of air pollution in the Antelope Valley ever. And I got that on good authority from our air quality people here in the valley. Will be the downwinders of this plant, because, and let me show you some demonstration material here. Visuals are always helpful. This is what I call ground zero, it's in the corner of Sierra Highway and Avenue M. And that will be the source of the pollution if they get this fossil fuel plant built, because west-southwest winds will blow it over eastern Lancaster and some of central Lancaster, varies a bit. And that'll happen about 10 or 11 months out of the year. And when the time comes where we have a Santa Ana condition, north-northeast winds, Palmdale will be the recipient, but just for a couple of, six to seven weeks, probably, during the year. So I think we ought to appeal to Lancaster to reconsider, because this Antelope Valley is Saudi Arabia of wind and solar power, and fossil fuel is gonna become lesser and lesser dependent on, as the governor has ordered, up to 33% now of our energy sources come from sustainable. So that Palmdale rethink that, and because Lancaster's slogan here is, is positively clear, I don't think it's gonna be too clear when you see all that pollution in the air, and you might not see it. So if it's, this becomes an opera for solution, I mean, a slogan, then I think we ought to go back to the poppy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Bozignian, can we get a report on just what the air quality effects of that plant is gonna be?
Certainly, we'll work with the air quality district on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Should we abandon our efforts on the...
Shannon.
Oh, Shannon showed up, is that what you're telling us?
She's got potato dough.
Bet she has a whole laptop.
You get a little laptop now.
Why don't you give us one more speaker, and we'll...
Darby Hartman?
I came to talk to the city on the subject of bicycle safety, because we, my husband and I are serious cyclists. We have been car-free for over a year. I've been reading with interest that you are adding to the bike lane program throughout the city. But there's one thing else I would ask the city to do. Please direct the sheriff's department to start writing repair tickets to cyclists who ride after dark without the proper legal headlights and taillights. They are a hazard to themselves, they're a hazard to cars, and they have a negative reflection on those cyclists who do go properly lit. The other thing I would ask is that you direct the sheriff's department to, in the initial phase, make them warning tickets given to cyclists who choose to ride on the sidewalks, who choose to ride the wrong way down the street, who choose to suddenly jump off of one curb and burst across the traffic and up onto the other curb. Because again, they represent a negative reflection on all of the cyclists who are trying to do their fair for cleaner, share for cleaner air. That's my, my subject, sir.
Thank you very much. Captain Anderson? What's the, the ratio of traffic officers we have at night versus day? I'm wondering if that's the reason that, if that's not being enforced.
Probably 15% of what we have.
Why don't you discuss that with, you know, the appropriate traffic people and see if that's an issue we should be working on? I mean, obviously, that's a huge danger. Okay.
I've always run head-on into other bikes myself because they didn't have lights on.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that, okay?
Good evening, council, staff, and citizens. I was gonna go a couple different directions. I noticed that the direction we take around here sometimes surrounds around comedy. I find it amusing. I want to commend Mr. Lawson, which isn't comedy, for the professional way and timely manner he responded to me today. We didn't get a chance to speak, but my questions got answered. On the front of the agenda, it says that we are a city, City of Lancaster, the general law city with the council manager former government. City council makes the policy, and city manager is responsible for carrying it out. And that kind of raises a question in my mind with respect to the Human Relations Task Force. I believe that was a policy set by Mr. Hearns back a while back, and I would think that the city manager wouldn't be able to step in and overturn that. But I've kind of reached the part of the evening where we can talk about the bizarre behavior of people unable to follow the rules, or we can just have a little fun and have comedy. So I don't know which direction we'd like to go. Having said that, I'm gonna tell a few jokes here. I think I got a minute and 48 seconds. Sure that's well within my constitutional rights. You know, does anybody know why sharks don't attack attorneys? Professional courtesy. Does anybody know where to find a good lawyer? In the cemetery. There's a few others here, let's see. Let's see, I was, it was so cold outside, I saw a lawyer with his hands in his own pocket. We've all heard these jokes before. What's the ideal weight for a lawyer? 10 pounds, including the urn? And then I got a couple left, since we haven't got anything better to do. How do you get a group of lawyers to smile for a picture? You say fees. And I think that's about it. I saw the, the other day, the newspaper article, that there was a new law office opened down on 10th Street, Dewey, Cheatham, and Howe. Thank you.
Is he done?
Still got 20 seconds. You'd like me to dial up more.
He really is pushing it, isn't he?
Freedom of speech, something you don't want to say.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, ladies and gentlemen of the community. So my name is Ramon Roberts, a representative member here in the Antelope Valley, and I come tonight just to thank you all on two subjects. The first is the lowered crime rate that we've noticed over the past two years. Since, it was quoted in the paper a couple weeks ago, since 2007, we've gone down about a third here in Lancaster. Last year was 41%, in particular dealing with gang-related crimes. As someone who works with youth in this community, I don't know if we realize it, but when we see statistics like that, it provides hope to our kids. Because you have, when they deal with the gang issues on a daily basis, to hear and to even see these rates begin to drop, it makes them think, maybe I don't have to be a product of the things around me. Maybe there is hope, maybe there is a chance for me to become something more than what I see or experience on a regular basis. So I want to say thank you to you all, thank you to our, our police force for making the efforts that you all have in order to see these issues not overtake us, but we overtake them. Secondly, from the small business perspective, me and someone who grew up in a home where small business was how we had food on the table, just appreciate you all's efforts. And Mr. Mayor, sir, if I can quote you, you said, "Small businesses are the heartbeat of America. They're the vital component of the American economy as well as that of the city of Lancaster." We are working with these businesses owners to succeed. So I just want to say thank you for that. I'm a small business owner myself, entrepreneur, and it's, it's encouraging to realize our city government is really trying to, one, you recognize where the strength of America is and has always been, is in the small businesses, and then you want to help see, see us succeed. So thank you for that, and looking forward to the things in the days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, my goal for, for 2010 is to get the city, at least in the council chambers, to use apples. We will not be seeing the video tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, I have seen the video, and Mr. Mayor, you did a great job.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk tonight about last week, when I came to you and I asked for the city to change course on Measure I. Mr. Mayor, you, you said that, I guess you either have faith or you don't, and I would just like to say to you that just because I don't subscribe to your exact type of faith doesn't mean that I don't have faith. I have faith in the truth, and I have faith in agapi, the brotherly, sisterly love that is the core of the teachings of Jesus. And as I go around and I demonstrate the love that I try and share with all of you, I hope you realize that's part of my love of Jesus. Just because we disagree about what Jesus is, doesn't mean that I love Jesus any less. I know Jesus said many will come in my name, and they sure have, and I want to talk about one who did. We tend to think of the olden days as some distant time, but they were pretty much the same. They didn't have cell phones and satellites in the Colbert Report, but life was just like it is. We have the same political intrigues now as we've always had as human beings. And Constantine was a Roman general, and he was fighting for control of Rome to become the emperor. And on a night when he was about to have a battle... a battle that would turn the tide for him to become the emperor, he had a vision. Now, also in those times, at the beginning of the fourth century, Christianity was in its nascent state, and there were many factions. There were factions that incorporated the Jewish scriptures in their canon, and there were those that didn't. There were those that felt there was a dual nature to Christ. There were some that thought it was a mystical but not divine nature. There were some that thought Christ was enlightened. So, there were many different factions of Christianity. Now, it just so happened that Constantine, who was a professional soldier, a son of a general, a pragmatist, he was also quite superstitious, and he liked what people liked in those days, the best God to lead them in the battle. And the person that interpreted his vision was a bishop from a church who felt the Jewish scriptures were part of the canon and Christ was divine. Through time, when he consolidated his efforts, first thing that Constantine did was purge all the other factions from the church. He persecuted all the other Christians. On top of that, he never gave up his pagan beliefs. He wrote love songs to his other gods, but it was politically expedient to adopt this track. That's how we wound up with Christianity in its present state, and there are other ways to love Jesus. I'm gonna come back here next week and finish this, but that's all I have for now. I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay, so now we have a, a group on massage therapy, and you wanted to stay together, I take it? Okay. And Julie Foster is first, is that right? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Paris and City Council members. My name is Julie Foster, and I am founder and owner of Overdid It Massage Center located only a stone throw away. I am here tonight because of the recent negative publicity regarding massage establishments, and I know that you as City Council members and nobody up there is held responsible for what hit the paper, I think, two weeks ago. I want you and the citizens of Lancaster to know that I take my role and responsibility as a business professional in this, in the community very seriously, and I expect the same from every worker who steps foot in my doors. At Overdid It, we hold the care of the people in our hands, and we work always to help everyone, including the terminally ill, the elderly, the youth athletes, the special needs, and oftentimes we take care of the poor who simply cannot afford to pay. Tonight, my therapist and I have come to express some concerns we have regarding the image of our profession that it faces in our community and to humbly request your ear and your support. I know you all must be aware of Miss Brew Bakers, and for that matter, all of code enforcement's efforts and attempts to bring things under control in the community regarding massage establishments, and I think that we all recognize that their task is not small. However, a great deal of the requirements in our current ordinance and Palmdale's ordinance are discriminatory, we feel, and they help to perpetuate the belief that we are all ladies of the night, while doing absolutely nothing to stop the prostitution at other establishments. What we have to understand is that this is not a, just a prostitution issue. This is much larger than anyone in this room can fathom, including human trafficking and the sex slave industry. And it all requires a different kind of perseverance, not heavier laws that only cripple legitimate businesses. Mr. Paris and the City Council, I understand the ordinance is being rewritten, and I have been in contact with the lawyer who is drafting that new ordinance. Soon the ordinance will be a statewide, and it will, it is our hope that as legitimate massage therapists, we will be treated as true professionals in the community and will be trusted to make the decisions. I also have to best run our own business and to choose our own locations and our own mode of operations. We look forward to this coming event with optimism. Our biggest concern, Mr. Paris, is that in our case, that it is what is being said publicly is more destructive to our profession than what is not being said. Every article that is written seems to have busted for prostitution in the same sentence as massage therapy. We are often referred to as massage parlors and masseuses. If the only thing ever written about us as a profession is bad, then the public will always hold the belief that we are all operating under less than professional ethics. While I know that you all sitting up there tonight have absolutely no control over what is published in the newspaper, I'm asking that after hearing from me and my workers, you and the public at large will now acknowledge our plight, and when referring to us as a profession, you will speak highly and respectfully of us. Thank you.
Julie, you should see what they say about lawyers.
I thought about that. When I was drafting this, I seriously was thinking about you. I'm thinking, he's in the same boat.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Carter, and I'm a recent graduate from University of Antelope Medical College. After completing one hundred hours of externship at Overdid It, I was given the opportunity to have, to prove myself as being a professional massage to the community of Lancaster. On, on behalf of Overdid It, I would like to thank the Antelope Valley News Today for being the only newspaper that would take the time to truly understand massage therapists' struggle for good reputation. The AV News Today has been a tremendous voice to our profession, and we cannot thank them enough for their respect and, and contribution, sorry, they, they made toward, sorry.
Take a breath.
We cannot thank them enough for the respect, the contribution they have made toward projecting a positive image for our profession. I'm also calling on the citizens of Lancaster and the City Council to please understand that we are hard-working, professional, licensed therapists here at Overdid It, and in the light of all the negative publicity, we need and humbly request your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Hawkins.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council members. My name is Fred Hawkins, and I'm a recent graduate of University of Antelope Valley Massage Therapy Program. I'm a licensed professional massage therapist, and I work at Overdid It. In light of the recent news media highlighting arrests of massage establishments, I'm sorry, for prostitution, I wanted to come here tonight and compel you in the community to not group us all together when you read those headlines. As a massage therapist working at Overdid It, I encourage you to visit Overdid It to see how we are, we are different and how we work every day to redefine the way people think about massage. I wanted to come here tonight, I apologize, I am here to help the public, and I work every day to make sure that I act in a professional manner and uphold values that I, that I can pass on to my two smaller children. I am proud of my profession, and I hope that the public will one day also regain confidence in massage establishments and see us as legitimate professionals. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Jennifer Carter. Already did you. Okay. Sarah Odom. Still in the right order, right?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Paris and-
Hi, how are you?
-Council members. My name is Sarah Odom, and I am also a recent graduate of the University of Antelope Valley Massage Therapy Program, and I have been recently hired on to the staff at Overdid It. I am a qualified professional. I work very hard to maintain a good reputation. By working at Overdid It, I feel I can maintain my good reputation and move forward in my career. Although I am concerned about my reputation as a massage therapist because of the articles that have been put out in the papers, I would like to ask all of you tonight to be an active voice for us legitimate massage therapists who are trying to provide a good service, a good quality service to those clients who desperately need us. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Christina P-
Piscaccio. I know that's hard, but-
Let me get it. Piscaccio?
Piscaccio.
Piscaccio.
Yes.
I'll work on it.
My name is Christina Piscaccio, and I also, I'm a graduate from the University of Antelope Valley. I'm a professional licensed massage therapist, and I work at Overdid It now going on six months. Because the public has only been told the bad about massage therapists, it is our concern that the public never is hearing the good. I just want to take a moment to say that there is much good to say about Overdid It. I want you and the public to know that Overdid It competed and won the Antelope Valley Fair, won a decorating contest. We have donated thousands of dollars of massages and gift baskets for charities. We actively participate in street fairs and other local events, and we also have hosted a fundraiser to pay for funeral expenses for one of our families in the community. In addition, we have also conducted many free stretch seminars for youth athletes, for owners of stores, to help employees protect themselves against injuries. As every employer knows, healthy workers come to work and healthy work is produced. Therefore, we see it as our job to help workers be productive and active in taking care of their own health. I and my coworkers work very hard to uphold a standard in our community that is worth being admired. I'm asking all of you and the citizens of the Antelope Valley to please acknowledge us and being exactly what we are, legitimate, professional, and licensed. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, I take it you're the, the leader of the group? What specifically are you looking for us to do?
Well, one of the issues that's always comes up is, like I said, it's always prostitution is associated with it, and it doesn't take more than two minutes to say, wait a minute. We do have legitimate professional places. There's Antelope Springs, Second Wind. There's sisters in this profession who work just as hard and struggle just as hard as we do to maintain that legitimacy. For ones that are, you know, you don't have to search far. Go to Craigslist to see exactly which ones aren't legitimate. The ones there, if somebody says something about, oh, yeah, there's a massage center, it takes two minutes to say, wait a minute, we do have legitimate places here. Doesn't take anything more than opening the phone book to see which ones are professional. It's not tibetan science here. There are good people, and we're here to support those. So if, like, we, we called upon the church community, even, you know, a lot of people in the churches, please help us. We wrote to athletic programs all throughout, in the entire Antelope Valley, all the way to Little Rock, and said, look, you have kids that are hurting. That's what we do take care of here. We take care of the youth athletes. So, next time you have somebody that says, well, I'm not taking my kid to this place, you know what I do know of a good place you can take your kid. And that's all we're asking.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
I, I have a suggestion. I think if it's, it is a legitimate business, I'm sure, we could meet with them, our economic development staff, and see if we can feature them in some upcoming, coming publication or e-news or something like that.
Hey, I got an idea. Why don't we certify ones? You know, the legitimate ones? We give them some kind of city certification?
Well, they have a business license and all of those things. They both-
Yeah, but so do the others. So do the ones on Craigslist.
Not, well, they-
Oh, really?
No. I, I think, I think it's an excellent point, and I think we could work with them, both with the media to get the business highlighted and through our own local channels.
All right. Let's put something together. I, you know, I, my, my heart goes out to you. I, I-
Well, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, have you been in contact with Leanne Roth at the AV Press at all? Because she normally does.
Ms. Marquez, yes, I have been in touch with Ms. Leanne.
Okay.
And Ms. Leanne and I both know where that will take us. It's not, yeah, she's, I don't have support at AV Press. Or we, everybody would have known about all the things that we mentioned, that we tried to be positive in the community and to do.
Have you, you spoken to her personally?
Ms. Marquez, she's come into my place of business.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't really want to publicly disgrace her for the things that she said to my face, but, but thank you. Believe me, I've tried every avenue, every avenue. My workers, we sit daily, we sit daily and say, what can we do? How can we put the word out that we're different? How can we say to the public we're not one of them? And we have asked the paper's support. We have. We've done literally everything we know to do.
If we're licensing massage therapists, or regulating massage therapists and their places of employment, perhaps we can make it easier to look up their places of employment on the city website to determine if it is a legitimate establishment, if it's been properly vetted.
See, there's a fine-
We're not gonna let you vet them.
There's a fine line because, there's a fine line because the harder we try to show that we're legitimate, it just seems like the more we sit and sit on the other end of the spectrum that says, why should I have to prove myself? That's the thing. It's like, I feel like we're always fighting this battle of trying to prove that we're legitimate.
Well, I think the reality is that that's just the nature of the beast that you're involved in. I mean, you know, the, the, for the past thirty years, they've used your profession as a vehicle to engage in illegal activity, and, you know, you're, you're bearing the brunt of it. But we, we will work with you to figure out a way that we can be of some benefit, because I, I do think it's outrageous that, you know, people have to bear that burden unnecessarily.
Thank you. We really appreciate anything you can do to help.
Thank you.
And just so you know, there's two of us that were on the council when we went through this and, and created the ordinance, and we created the ordinance just specifically to help people like you. In fact, the, our ordinance was crafted with the local professional massage therapists that came together with us and informed it. And, you know, our effort is to get rid of all of the, the people that are doing, giving you a bad name. And I know that when we went through all that, it's, it's, as the mayor said, it's, it's tough.
It's no easy task.
No, but it's something that-
I think it's, as it goes back to my speech, I think it's a different kind, though. I know we can pass every law for how late we can be up, and we've had parties where we're like, gotta get the last person on the table. We have to, because at nine fifty-nine, I'm no longer, at ten o'clock, I'm no longer legitimate. Nine fifty-nine, that last person, it has to be off the table. So by, by dictating our time that we can open and dictating like what we can wear, and those are all like-
That was done-
Small things.
Right, but those, that was done a number of years ago. Those ideas came from the professionals.
But they're not-
They came from the professionals.
But they're not stopping.
Okay, we're willing, we're willing to, we're willing to meet with you. We're willing to look at this again, are willing to look at it again.
I have lots of ideas.
Okay, good.
If I had a lunch, ten minutes, I could just spew them right out my mouth, really, on how it can be a different route and how we can stay legitimate.
Soon as I get back from China, okay?
All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
It's a date.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith.
They just put my name on there. It's actually Councilwoman Marcus that'll be giving the report today.
I'd be glad to do that. The AVA QMD, we met February sixteenth, and we set a date of March sixteenth to connect a public hearing to consider the amendment of Rule 403, which is fugitive dust. The AVA QMD Executive Director has drafted a letter to the governor addressing the local concerns regarding implementation of the Global Warming Solutions Act of 2006. And the new state air quality regulations are evolving at such an unrealistic pace that they have asked them to, basically to address that and the issues as related to the high desert environment. But in all of that, what I have suggested and would like to see the city do, and I've already gone, gone ahead and given the information to Mr. Tantango, and to ask the city to come back with a resolution or a letter to the state requesting the same, is just to slow down on this. The regulations are, are really hurting business people.
Put it on the agenda.
And I would agree on that. Put it on the agenda for next time.
Yes, we'll put it on the agenda for March.
One commoner question if I could ask Robert Neal, because it's, it's in that report, and having got an update on that. On the fugitive dust, you know, we've been working on this for a couple of years now. Are we gonna get something where we actually have some type of, you know, deposit or bond we were looking at so that when we have fugitive dust from construction, even though that's not as much of a problem now, we had contractors that walked away from jobs or didn't do what they were supposed to. Is that gonna be part of the partnership that we're having with the AQMD in changing our
Vice Mayor Smith, we will definitely look into it and see if we can't make that happen a reality. But what I hear you're saying is, is that we need to be prepared for the next construction wave, and that we don't create these dust problems, and, and that we should make sure we have securities to protect us in the event of defaulting contractors.
Right. I think it hasn't been a priority because we haven't had as much construction, but, you know, when I initiated it, I don't know, about three years ago on the AQMD, the idea is, is that the contractor has to put up a bond like they do for other things, that if they don't perform, the AQMD or the city can actually get the water tanks out there to knock down the dust because there's children with, you know, asthma or respiratory things, and if that contractor's not doing it, the AQMD doesn't have any teeth to, to do it. And a fine doesn't, they pay the fine, and that's okay, but if we could get the water out there and knock it down, and that was the whole idea. So hopefully, we're still working in that direction.
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any council comments? No closed session. We're adjourned until March ninth, 2010, at 5:00 PM. Carol, I'm coming home.